As per the agenda, in the absence of Mr. Nguyen, I will have the pleasure of delivering the invocation.
Let's all rise.
Dear Lord, we ask for blessings upon this meeting and for each person gathered with us today. We pray that you will guide us in our deliberations and give us the strength and wisdom to make the best decisions for the people of our beautiful city. Help us to remember to be worthy instruments of service. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Mr., while we're standing, Mr. Gambrell, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Rosio.
Here.
Vice Chairman Herschinson.
Here.
Board member Gambrell.
Here.
Board member Waterhouse.
Listen.
Board member Benson.
Here.
Board member Galloway.
Here.
Board member Nguyen, who is absent. And we have a quorum.
Getting back to the agenda, the first item would be the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on October 17, 2023. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I second. I'll make an emotion. You're just...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Okay. Now, as we usually do, we will delay the public comment until the end of the public So today, we have one case, Riverbend Residential Planned Development, an amendment to a residential planned development to develop up to 10 detached villas, boat docks, and other accessory uses, and to add five deviations. Usually, we hear from... You want to do the city first?
Well, I was just going to do a brief introduction for the applicant, but I know that in absence of Derek, we need to do a swearing in of all those who are going to...
We will do that, yeah.
Okay. So, good morning, everybody. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record. I'll do a brief introduction of this case, and then, as usual, let the applicant go first, since it is their request. This is an amendment to an ordinance that was approved back in 2010. At that time, that ordinance approved 16 units total as part of this project with a variety of dwelling unit types, including two-family and multifamily. This request is to reduce the density down to 10 units and to create a new dwelling unit category called detached villas, which essentially are designed to look and function as single-family homes. There are no two units that are attached to one another. They're all separated, as you can see on the master concept plan. They all have their own driveways. Essentially, they function as a single-family home. The only difference being, it is all still one unified parcel, one unified project. So with that, I will let the applicant go ahead and take the lead and provide their presentation, and staff will be here as well for some cleanup comments. So with that, Mr. Wayne Arnold.
Yeah, we will, yeah.
Should we do the swearing in, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we probably should do the swearing in before the applicant goes.
Mike, I could do that as clerk.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, good morning, Noel Davies.
All right. Everybody who's going to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
They were all sworn in. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, board members. Again, Noel Davies with the Law Firm of Davies Duke on behalf of the applicant for this item, which is BB Sunset Properties LLC. We do have the full team here this morning. Our client representatives are here. Wayne Arnold with Q Grady Minor and Associates is our professional planner. Michael Herrera is our civil engineer, also with Grady Minor. Hans Wilson is our environmental consultant, and James Banks is our transportation engineer. Here is the subject property. We're at the north end of Big Bend Road. Size is approximately 1 and 1/2 acres. I'm going to have Mr. Arnold walk you through the specifics of our request, but before he does that, I want to be clear about the nature of the request today, which is what we call a down zoning. You heard this from Mr. Fegan. The existing zoning on the property today is residential planned development for 16 dwelling units, and the property was previously rezoned back in 2010 to allow for that set of entitlements. Since then, the control of the property has changed, and my client is asking that the 16 units be reduced down to 10 units. The 16 boat slips are also being requested to be reduced down to 10 slips, and in order to do this, as you all know, my client has to go through the full rezoning process, even though what they want to do is less intensive than what is allowed on the property by right today. You will hear, of course, from the full staff report from Mr. Fegan, your staff has reviewed this proposal in detail and is recommending approval. And with that, I will introduce Mr. Arnold to walk you through the remainder of our request. Thank you, board members.
Good morning. I'm Wayne Arnold, a certified planner with Q Grady Minor and Associates, here representing the applicant, and I was going to walk you through some of our other parts of the presentation and make sure I can... So again, as Mr. Davies pointed out, location exhibit, the project is previously approved as a RPD. We rezoned it back in 2010. Our firm was involved with that case, and it resulted in 16 units, which were to be in a combination of a condominium building as well as duplex-type structures. The site is just a little over 1 and 1/2 acres. It's medium-density, single-family land use category. That allows up to 11.6 dwelling units per acre of a variety of housing types. And as Mr. Fegan and Mr. Davies both mentioned, we're eliminating the townhome and multifamily, and we're asking to construct 10 detached villas, which we've defined, because even though these are detached, single-family type structures, a single-family residence under your code has to sit on a platted individual, single-family lot. These are meant to be condominium-owned units of land with a detached structure on them. So we've defined a detached structure, and under your comprehensive plan, there's a policy that says you have the authority to authorize other types of similar land uses that aren't specifically listed. So this is just a different residential housing type, but it allows for the detached villa, and as Mr. Fegan said, those are not attached by any other wall, and in all essence, if you drove by it, you're going to think you're looking at a single-family...
Can I ask you a question, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
The owner of one of these villas will own the land, freehold?
They will own condominium unit in the land, so...
Condomin... Okay, that's what it is. Okay, now I think I understand it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. So this is the approved master plan for the 2010 approval. It's a little hard to see, but there were going to be a series of larger condominium building as well as detached duplex-type structure that got us to our 16 dwelling units. Just to revisit a little bit of the history, this was kind of a controversial project back in the day, because we were going from something that had traditionally allowed duplexes that were on the site to allow this multifamily structure, and it was seen to be a little bit controversial, because it was a large structure and it wasn't smaller in scale. So we thought, coming back to this product type that we're proposing today, was a better fit for the neighborhood, and I think you'll hopefully agree that it is. This is our proposed master concept plan. It's quite different. I'm going to show you this version. It's just easier to read with some color on it. So you can see that we have a series of, in brown, the 10 villas arranged throughout the site. We have shown improvements in individual driveways off of Big Bend Road, and we've also provided for a fire turnaround that will meet the fire code and provide, rather than a cul-de-sac at the end of the street that terminates in a wetland, we're providing a turnaround for fire and emergency apparatus on the site itself. You can see that we've proposed the individual driveways, as I mentioned. We've proposed 10 docks, so each unit would have access to a dock facility. Just to orient you, we have, toward north is a preserve that's part of the Bedida Bay PD, and then we have TFC 2 zoning with some single-family homes to the east and south. We have Mr. Herrera here. I know that some of the issues, as we've met with the neighbors over our two informational meetings, there are some flooding issues on Big Bend Road that we've tried to address. In fact, our firm's been retained to help the city analyze some of the improvements that can be completed along that street section to make drainage improvements. We have a schedule of uses really, really simple here. We've asked for one unit type, and that's the detached villa. We've also defined that term. I think staff has become comfortable with that. I think that, as you mentioned, Mr. Rosio, that it's... The condominium unit of ownership for single-family structures isn't common, but it's not unheard of, and we have similar examples down in the Naples market that we've shown staff, and they're, I think, now comfortable with this concept. But we've asked for typical accessory uses, including the seawalls and boat docks, fences, and the regular things that you would typically find for a single-family neighborhood. We've established our own property development regulations. Some of these also relate to the various deviations that we've asked for. Staff did a really good job. I thought of analyzing those deviations that we had proposed and work with them. And in fact, just to back up a little bit, overall, you have a separate section of your LDC that pertains only to planned developments, and it establishes some different standards that are only applicable to planned developments, but it doesn't really distinguish between the type of product. So it establishes, for instance, setbacks based on the fact it's PD zoning rather than the type of unit that you're proposing. So we've asked for a couple of those deviations that will allow us to have the single-family type residence and allow us to build the site, which we think is a very compatible manner with the neighboring properties. So these are the locations of our deviations, and as I mentioned, one of them was to not have to put in 125-foot separation between a building and the nearest driveway. Your code says that if you're going to have a driveway within 125 feet of another residence, that you need to have the setback with a wall. We've proposed the wall. We've proposed the normal setback or the landscape vegetation within it, but it doesn't really make sense when you're putting another single-family structure adjacent to a single-family structure, which are otherwise exempt. So that's our justification for that deviation. Likewise, there's a part of your code that says if you have a wildfire setback from this tiny little strip of vegetation we have right here on the site that I'm highlighting, we would have a 30-foot setback from that normally, because your code says for wildfire protection. It's a wetland. It's really not subject to a wildfire, given that it's adjacent to the river, and Mr. Herrera from our office worked with the fire district to obtain a letter of no objection from them. So from their perspective, there's not an issue there. So that's probably the two deviations I wanted to highlight as part of this presentation. We'll go back and answer any questions you have, and I'm just trying to...
Did you just say "letter of objection"?
Letter of no objection.
No objection.
Yes, sir. So these were some photos of the site prior to Hurricane Ian, and today, if you've driven by there, and you probably have, you'll see that everything on the site's been razed. But there were previously four duplex structures and another single-family structure for a total of... I'm not sure if it was really operating as nine or 10 rental units on the site, so the number that we're proposing to put back of these detached villas seems to make sense and do them in a nicer and, I think, better arrangement as a site plan. Couple photos. You can see there's also a small little cutout that's a man-made cutout as part of the site. Just some conceptual renderings of the type of buildings. If you've driven around anywhere on the river, you're seeing that the structures are being taken down, those older 1960s and 70s structures, and being built with modern homes. Some are, you know, depending on flood elevation requirements, garage level at the first level, and then sometimes two living levels above them, which is reflected on the lower image, and then a traditional two-story home to the top. So something comparable to that is what we're envisioning on the site. Mr. Fegan and his staff report did a really good job analyzing the various criteria for planned development, and we've met those criteria. We don't have any environmental issues with regard to the project. We're more compatible. We're lowering the intensity of the project. We're consistent with your comprehensive plan. So we feel that we've proposed a really good project and a good fit for the neighborhood and hope that you all can support it. I'm here to answer questions for you.
Wayne, can you just go back to that slide that had the house... Keep going. It was a... This one?
Yep. Yes, sir.
How would you propose... I imagine that the people in these buildings will own a boat.
Mm-hmm.
Now, how would you propose, from what I see here, I see no access to the slips. Is that you're going to put it in, or... Looks like there's trees in the way, or...
I'll let either Hans or Michael tell you, but we'll be working to create... There'll be a walkway along the shoreline, working with Laura and your staff to do that, and then each unit probably has some sort of pathway out to that.
Oh, I understand. So the boats would basically stay in the river permanently?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I understand.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little confused. So I was just thinking of people having to transport the boat there, but...
Yes, sir.
That's not the case. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Wayne, excuse me. Could you expound a little bit on the issue of the flooding and what the mitigation plans would be to alleviate some of that?
Why don't I let Michael Herrera from our office come up and answer that? He can give you just a brief overview of what we're doing for water management on the site and what kind of permitting we're going to go through for that.
This is the highlight.
All right. Good morning. Michael Herrera, civil engineer, state of Florida, civil engineer with Grady Minor and Associates. And so, yeah, there's some stormwater elements to this project. We are going to be submitting to the South Florida Water Management District. They're going to be responsible for the stormwater management review, which will include water quality and attenuation calculations. So this facility will have onsite dry detention areas and on... Whoops. Let me see. How'd I go back there, Wayne? I know. There we go. All right. So in this area back in here, all on this seawall, there's going to be a detention area. You can kind of see the little dash lines in there. And then also, there is some area that's available beside some of these homes that, if we needed that... We haven't conducted all the stormwater management calculations at this time, but we are allocating areas for that in case we need it. And also, as a worst-case scenario, we still need some additional. There's some little area in the front that we can capture to manage the stormwater management system. But essentially, how the stormwater management system works is there will be a perimeter berm around the property that captures all the runoff, so it is its own basin, separate from Big Bend Road, separate from any of budding neighbors. All the stormwater management gets captured onsite, gets routed to these dry detention areas for water quality and attenuation, and then there will be a discharge structure that goes from those detention areas right into the Imperial River, and those flows will be regulated based on the state criteria.
I just had your follow-up. What is the current, you know, the topography right now? What is that elevation? And what will be the final elevation, say, the first-floor elevation for the buildings when constructed?
So, yeah, so this facility is in a flood zone. So based on the Florida Building Code, we have to be built at the base flood elevation plus one or the 100-year three-day storm event, whichever is greater. In this scenario, it is most likely, because we don't have to attenuate the 100-year, we have tidal discharge, so we'll just be doing water quality before discharging, so it will be set at the base flood elevation plus one. So the nature of the grading of these houses, it will be basically stilt home or underground park... underground garages.
Any questions?
You don't mean underground garages, do you?
Under... Sorry. No. Underbuilding parking. That would be Naples.
Any questions for Mr. Herrera?
This is a high-hazard flood area. Is that what I read here?
Well, yeah. The FEMA flood elevation is an AE zone. I'm not sure what you were reading there, but in terms of, is there localized flooding within Big Bend Road? That's our understanding. That's why our firm has been retained to do some of those analysis and studies and recommendations to the city on how to improve the localized flooding within the roadway.
And the last storm wiped this property out, right?
Yeah. At this point, it's been... It's cleared.
Okay, so you have to build... You don't have to build to the 100-year storm. You have to build to what?
The FEMA base flood elevation. So if it's AE 10 or 11, I forget what it is exactly. I apologize. But whatever that elevation is, plus one. So we will be built above the FEMA elevation by a foot.
And the FEMA elevation is... Do you know what that is?
If I... I believe it's 10, but I have to look it up. I can look that up real quickly.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Herrera.
Thank you, board members. Unless there's further questions, and we're happy to answer any additional questions, that concludes the applicant's formal presentation. Thank you.
We'll hear from the city.
Good morning, everybody. Mike Fegan again for the record with Community Development. I don't want to repeat too much of what was already said, so I'm probably going to jump around a little bit in the presentation, just kind of hit some points that I want to make sure that our staff were able to get on the record, and we'll just kind of go from there, if that's all right with you. So we already know where we're talking about in the city. We had a citywide location map in the previous presentation. I think we're all clear on where we are. We're clear on what the request is. It is a down zoning from 16 units down to 10 units for the detached villas, boat docks, accessory structures, and then to add five more deviations for a grand total of six. We already heard about the background from the applicant, so I won't spend too much time on that. As you know, this property was rezoned back in 2010, approved by city council for 16 units, a variety of unit types. The project was never completed pursuant to that previous master concept plan, and then there was significant damage on the property by Hurricane Ian, and since then, a new application had been submitted to try to effectuate the plan that's before you today. Schedule of uses, we already discussed that with the applicant's presentation. It is a very simplistic schedule of uses, removing all the dwelling unit types and then adding the detached villa with the definition, as we discussed before, occupied by one family, not connected to any other structure, but allowing these multiple units to be on the same parcel overall.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Go back one.
Yes, sir.
It says, in what you're eliminating, single-family maximum total two units. If this is, if a detached villa looks like, you know, walks like a duck, talks like a duck, that's a single-family unit, all right? You call it a detached villa. Why do you think that in the original, the single-family unit was limited to a maximum of two units on the site? Could it be because the site is pretty constrained, pretty small?
When you saw the... When you saw the previous master concept plan, and I have a slide for it as well, they wanted the flexibility to have a variety of unit types on site, but they were still capped by an overall density amount because of the size of the project, and that was just the way the numbers worked out. You know, as you can see, the main focus and the main thrust of that previous MCP was for multifamily, which is why they had 10 of those on site as part of the previous approval. So it was about getting the mix that they wanted.
So there's no real justification you can come up with for single-family being limited to two units, if you would go that way? I'm just saying that it must have something to do with the limitations on the site, that single-family somehow occupies more space on this site. Site is very limited, 1 and 1/2 acres or so. But anyway, I just don't understand that. The other thing I'd like to ask you about is detached villa. If we add that to the ordinance, what will that mean in the future? Can somebody go through the ordinance and say, "Oh, they allow detached villas in this zone. I want to put detached villas in my zone"?
So when we do this, we're not codifying it into the land development code. So this approval would be for this application, for this project, given this definition. Now, if somebody else decides that they like the way that functions, they want to try and use that somewhere else in the city for their project, they have the right to ask for it, but this is not a carte blanche approval city-wide that now gets codified into the land development code.
Michael, the way I understand it, the only reason they're calling it a detached villa is because it's a condominium, as opposed to a single-family house, which would be a freehold.
That's correct, yes.
It's basically a technicality.
It is, and...
Or anything you want.
Sure, yes, it is, and even when you review their traffic study, they were done as the 10 units as being single-family units, because essentially, that's what they are, that's what they're functioning as. But in terms of the city's definition of what a single-family unit is, being on its own parcel of land, owning the land underneath, the fee simple holding of the land, it didn't meet that definition. So they had the option to propose their own definition for the dwelling unit type, and we reviewed it as such. And it took a little while to get there. I mean, when this project started, it was back in 2022, so it's taken a little while to get this one to this particular spot.
It's a new concept, and it takes a little understanding.
For us. You had something somewhat similar with the project that you approved on East Terry Street, Solterra?
Right.
In terms of being individualized units, but that was looked at as more along the lines of horizontal multifamily.
Yeah, there were...
Whereas this is single-family, yes, because of the ownership and the condominiumized portion.
Right.
Yes, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, cool. Is the staff going to recommend that we move... Recommend to the city that we move towards codifying the definition of detached villa?
If that is something that... It's not the staff recommendation at this time. If that is something that council expresses, or if the zoning board expresses that they would like staff to consider, if they're comfortable with this type of definition, we're always able to amend the land development code. There's a process that it goes through to amend it, and we could always amend the definition section, but that's not part of this application.
So to me, Mr. Chairman, this sounds like a good idea, but a little better defined, better in the code.
It really depends on the developers. I mean, what they might want to do, I don't know within our purview.
Well, he just said we could make a recommendation.
Which we approve. Wait for the next one. If these things become a progression of cases, then we'll look at it as an amendment to the... If, if these things become a progression of cases, then, then we'll look at it as an amendment to the code. But right now, I, I personally don't see the reason, the need to amend the code for this. That's my opinion, but.
Does the staff have ideas? What's the right word? Density of detached villas per X number of acres or setbacks from each other?
So the, the density is set by the future land use category of the property. So it doesn't matter what type of unit you put on, there are unit, is a unit, is a unit. It's, it's set by the future land use category of the comprehensive plan. So we don't see any conflicts with that or any reason to change that to have some type of ratio where it's like two villas equals one standard unit, you know, something like that. No, it, it's a one for one ratio. So we haven't really-
So what category is this piece of land in?
This is in the medium density residential category, which allows up to 11.6 units per acre by right in the comprehensive plan. And they're at about, like they said, about an acre and a half, give or take. And they're only asking for 10 units, so they're well below the density that they could ask for.
So there you go. You answered my density question and how we got to that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more, one more question?
Yes, sir.
What you're essentially doing in this project is eliminating the lot lines. You're not creating a lot, you're creating one lot, basically.
Yes.
With no lot lines in it, which is, which basically in planning terms eliminates, changes in required setbacks, changes in required distance between houses, changes a whole bunch of things. Okay, in term, in terms of exactly how you plan and design this layout. So what we have is basically a blank piece of paper, no lot lines on it. You get to create your own setback requirements, okay? As, as you have done, you know, to the north boundary, 10 feet to the mangroves, where the requirement's 30 feet. The interval between houses, 10 feet, as opposed to the standard for single family homes, 15 feet. So in other words, you're letting the developer design his own rules and regulations for how this thing works.
Correct.
And in some cases, that's in defiance of the expressed wisdom of the zoning ordinance, which for single family houses has a setback, let's say, separation of 15 feet. So now you're allowing a separation of 10 feet. And, and that bothers me, it really does. Because we have this, I assume, accumulated wisdom over the years of how, how far apart single family houses should be, particularly when they're three stories high. Okay, as it probably will be in this case. I'm just, I'm, I'm leery of how we're doing this.
You know, I think what you have to remember, this is one lot. One lot, not 10 individual lots. So lot lines don't count. It's a condominium. Consider a high rise.
That's exactly-
Right? That's exactly what it is. Instead of units in a high rise, you have individual pieces of land, of houses sitting in, in one lot. Simple, unless I'm crazy.
No, but I-
The practical effect, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, is 10 single family houses. That's the practical effect of, of this rule.
On one lot.
On one lot. The practical, what it looks like, again, what it quacks like. It's a single family house, 10 single family houses on one lot.
No, it's a condominium.
Yes, it's a condominium form of ownership.
That's it, that's it. That's it, it's a condominium, please. Anyway, look, I mean, this is, I'm not going to get involved in the semantics anymore. It's a condominium.
Well, I-
Like Mr. Lawyer? Condominium.
Mr. Lawyer here. Well, just to, just to go off of Mr. Galway's comments, the entire purpose of the planned development zoning district is to create your own zoning district. So your own definitions, your own setbacks, your internal rules. I don't know that whether or not this will be developed all at one time, like a condominium would. But unlike our standard zoning districts where you would have lots that would be independently developed by independent homeowners and, and with independent styles of housing and things like that, this is something where the, where we always just assume that the people who are going to live in these condominiums know what they're buying into. And so we're not necessarily going to have the same setbacks as we would in a, in a plotted sub-
Are you going to be able to same, same design and?
I would also note, just for clarification for Board Member Galway, because that is a good point that you raised, and that is something that staff does consider when we go through this process. You're talking about it from the perspective of looking at a conforming, properly sized, single family lot of 7,500 square feet. And that's where we pulled the seven and a half foot setback from. Because essentially, if it's a 75 foot wide lot, 10% of the lot width is usually what the setback is, so you're seven and a half feet. We have a series of existing lots right now in the city that are not in planned developments that are undersized for the zoning district in that regard. There are tons of 50 foot wide lots, if you will, already in the city. Many of them out on Hickory, out on the beach, out on Little Hickory Island. We have several in nearby neighborhoods from here, even right across the street from, on Big Ben. On the opposite side, you have a series of 50 foot wide lots that right now have five foot side yard setbacks. So 10 foot in between structures. So that 10 foot in between structures does tend to be something that staff has seen over and over and over again, whether it's planned developments that occurred through Lee County, that we took part of when we became a city, or ones that we've seen since we've been here. That five foot side yard setback or 10 feet between structures seems to be a normal regulation that gets proposed as part of this process. If it were something less restrictive than that, staff would have to look at that closer, and we would. And you do have PDs that allow setbacks even less than that. Bonita Bay is a perfect example. You have certain sections of Bonita Bay where it's attached, or it's zero feet, or it's one feet, or it's two feet. We have a series of planned developments out east that have something similar. So the, the idea of creating your own development regulations, that, that is what the planned development is for, we still review it for consistency purposes in the surrounding area. And we feel that they met the standard based on the regulations that they've provided.
That was helpful.
So we already reviewed what the property development regulations would be. I think we just, we had a little discussion on that, so I will skip that slide. One thing that isn't changing, this probably should be made clear, is there were previous standards for overall lot coverage and overall open space of 40%. Those standards are not changing. We are keeping those from the previous ordinance. So this is a more zoomed in version of the original master concept plan that was approved as part of the 2010 ordinance. And you can see that the, again, the thrust of that project was the multifamily building, which was going to be right up front along Big Ben Road there with your separated units off on the sides there. So you're going from that to this, which tends to be a little bit more streamlined from the staff perspective. And again, with the design and the driveways mainly functioning as a single family product just with condominium ownership on the inside. So there were five deviations that were requested as part of this application. One of them is a carryover from the previous ordinance, the 2010 ordinance. But with that, there were five additional deviations, so a total of six. And I will quickly go through those. So the first one has to do with a requirement that if you have a driveway or a roadway within 125 feet of an existing residential structure, you have to put up a berm, a wall, or some type of berm-wall combo with landscaping. And there's a setback for that wall that's supposed to be at least 25 feet off of your property. Well, what, what their request is, is to make that setback for the wall within a 10 foot wide buffer on the south side of the property. Because that's the only place where it's needed, is on the south side, because that's where the existing residential is. This is a setback that we've seen many ti- I'm sorry, this is a deviation that we've seen in many other applications before. And with, with this functioning as a single family development, in conventional zoning, this type of buffer and wall wouldn't even be needed. But they are going to provide it, they are going to landscape it, and it is going to be within a 10 foot wide buffer area. So staff doesn't have an issue with that. Because again, with the previous MCP, you had a variety of dwelling unit types. So you can make a case that a larger buffer was needed to help visually screen or block some of the intenser parts of the project. Essentially, it's single family next to single family. And in the conventional code, a buffer wouldn't even be needed. But still, the code wants you to address it in some way, shape, or form. So they still are going to put up that wall. Their request is just not to set it back 25 feet off the property line. That'd be halfway through the first unit. So they're requesting to be able to move the wall and landscaping closer to the boundary. The second deviation is a carryover from ordinance 10-02, which had to do with model homes not needing to go through a separate administrative process. The one update was, there was an update to the code section reference. Back in 2010, it was a Lee County code section reference. Now it's a Bonita Springs land development code, code reference. So that's the only change to that one. For the third deviation, this has to do with the setback from a wildland or preserve area. The conventional code requests a 30 foot setback from structures to a preserve area or a wildland area. The applicant's justification, as you heard before from Wayne, was that the preserve area is a mangrove swamp, it's a wetland, so the risk of fire is very minimal. It is important to note that the code does not prohibit a lesser setback. What the code section actually states is that if you want that lesser setback, you have to provide a wildland mitigation plan. And the plan has to be approved by Bonita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. So what they are proposing is to provide that plan as part of their development order permit submittal, which will be reviewed by Bonita Springs Fire and Rescue District. They've already had preliminary meetings with Bonita Fire, who have approved the request. But again, for the sake of meeting what the code requires, they are going to provide that mitigation plan. It will be reviewed by staff, it will be reviewed by Bonita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. So because of that, staff does not object to that deviation request. Deviation four has to do with a right of way buffer. The conventional code right now would require a 15 foot wide right of way buffer along Big Ben Road there. And their request is to decrease the buffer somewhat to allow just one tree per right of way of budding residential unit, and then provide for plantings in the proposed detention area that's going to be in front. And then no buffer adjacent to the mangrove areas on the north and the northeast, because there's nothing to buffer. It's a, it's a conservation area, it's a preserve area. So we are going to be requesting a right of way planting plan as part of the local development order process. They did provide a draft right of way planting plan that showed what their overall concept was going to be proposing for planting along the right of way. And right now, staff doesn't want to commit to that specific plan, which is why this, this specific deviation is worded very specifically with a staff approval. One of the things that's happening right now is that the city is working with Grady Minor and with the property owner to try and obtain an easement on the property to be able to provide additional drainage infrastructure for that area. And depending on if that is successful and where that easement goes, I suspect it's going to be next to the right of way, it's going to change what the right of way planting plan would look like. So we didn't want to commit to one as staff, we didn't want to commit to a planting plan at this stage. We instead wanted to foster an environment where those negotiations can continue to take place. And then as part of the development order process, where you get down to the nitty gritty details anyway, that's when we can work out a suitable right of way planting plan. So that's one of the conditions of approval that we have in there. The applicant did not object to that condition placed on this by staff. So because of that, we are okay granting this deviation. The next deviation is very similar to deviation three, where it is a setback from the wildland preserve area. The only difference is deviation three is talking about the offsite preserve area to the north. Deviation five is talking about that small 0.2 acre onsite mangrove preserve area that's on the northeast side. But it's essentially the same deviation, the same requirements would have to be upheld. They'd have to provide the wildland mitigation plan at time of local development order for review and approval by the Fire Control and Rescue District. And because of that, we are okay granting this deviation. And the final deviation request, deviation six, has to do with a perimeter setback, which right now, the code would require a 15 foot perimeter setback for residential plan development. And instead, they are requesting a less restrictive setback for buildings one, seven, and 10. And those are the buildings on the outer corners of the project. And their request is to drop the setback from 15 feet down to 10 feet. So essentially, you know, for buildings one and 10, it's adjacent to the mangrove preserve. So there really is no offsite visual impact on the neighboring property that would require the more restrictive setback. And then also, building 10 is adjacent to the Big Ben right of way, so no, no issues there overall. They are still going to be meeting the required building separations between the units and all around the units. And that's a standard that's in the development regulations. And again, the, the main purpose of a buffer of that size is to try and mitigate impacts of this development for surrounding properties. So again, to the north, it's the mangrove preserve, to the west is the river, to the east is the right of way. To the south is where there would be an impact. But as we discussed before, they're going to be putting a wall and landscaping there. So it visually mitigates that impact as well. So because of all those things working together, staff did not see an issue with approving that deviation. So we do recommend approval of that deviation as well. So that covers the deviation aspects. I'll quickly go over some of the environmental components. I think we've already discussed those, though. We know there's an onsite mangrove preserve area. It's contiguous to an offsite mangrove preserve that's required as part of the Bonita Bay PUD. The setbacks from those preserve areas are proposed to be at 10 feet, subject to approval of the wildland mitigation plan. And again, that's the key. If that plan doesn't get approved, they don't get the setback. So it's subject to approval of that wildland mitigation plan. The landscaping planting requirements will be met throughout the site. The requirements for indigenous vegetation, native vegetation plantings. The number of plants that are going to be required along that south side is not going to change. So they are meeting all of those landscape requirements. And we do have some additional analysis as part of the, the comp plan component of the staff review. Stormwater, Mike Carrera did a good job explaining the stormwater concept, so I don't want to go ahead and, and beat that to death. He already explained it pretty well. Yes, the project is required to contain, treat, and discharge its own stormwater. It must maintain historic flows. It cannot discharge more onto neighboring properties as a result of this project. There's a permitting process that they have to go through for their stormwater plan and their stormwater permits. And like I said, again, there's also negotiations happening right now with the city as part of a stormwater improvement project for that general portion of Big Ben Road. So stormwater, I assure you, is on the forefront of everybody's mind with a particular project like this. With the traffic, like I said, we, we reviewed the traffic impacts essentially as single family impacts. That's how they were reviewed for the traffic impact analysis. The TIS, the full TIS study was made available to you on the online version of your packet. And there were several tables there that outlined the previous TIS that was approved in 2010 and the current TIS with the reduction in units and how those two things shaped out. And overall, when you look at the affected roadway segments, the amount of traffic put on those roadways by this project is essentially less than a 1% impact to the network. And the city standard is anything 2% or less is considered a project of non-significant impact. So them being less than 1%, it's a project of non-significant impact as far as traffic goes. With that being the case, though, they are aware that additional improvements to Big Ben Road may be required. They are aware that they need to provide a sidewalk and multimodal facilities, which is required by the code. They are not objecting to doing any of those things. So we feel that they have demonstrated consistency with the traffic components of the LDC. Moving on to the comprehensive plan consistency, oh, I'm sorry, did I skip a slide? Sorry. Moving on to the comprehensive plan consistency. The future land use is medium density residential. It allows up to 11.6 dwelling units per acre. They have over an acre and a half of property. They're only asking for 10 units, so they're asking for less than what they could potentially propose. That category does allow single family homes and duplex structures to be permitted. There is another policy section in the comprehensive plan that has to do with allowable uses. And this is the section that staff utilized to review this detached villa concept. And this section states that we can review uses that have similar character and intensity to uses that are approved. So essentially, it was how does this measure up? So essentially, it was how does this measure up in character and intensity to the approved single-family units? And we saw a very good comparison in that this product was compatible. So because of that, staff felt comfortable with this detached villa concept. For the transportation element, we just discussed it. Big Ben Road is a constructed roadway. They are going to be providing the required sidewalk infrastructure. They are aware that additional improvements may be necessary within the right-of-way, and they will work with the city on those improvements. For the housing element of the comp plan, it's a residential project and a residential area. It is a unique housing type, which is actually one of the things in the housing element, is to try and provide for a variety of housing types and unique housing types if you can. This is kind of a unique housing type. So we do feel that it's meeting the requirements of that element as well. I think this is something that Board Member Gallway touched on before. Yes, this project is located in a coastal high-hazard area and a coastal management area. And one of the caveats of property in a coastal high-hazard area is that you cannot rezone property in a coastal high-hazard area to increase the density or intensity. So they're not. They're downzoning. They are decreasing the density and intensity in the high-hazard area, which is something that you are allowed to do. They are going to be required to design to FEMA standards and Florida Building Code standards for this hazard area. The conservation areas are going to have to be maintained. So they're checking the boxes that are necessary within that conservation and coastal high-hazard element of the comprehensive plan. And with all of that, staff is recommending approval of the amendment to effectuate this new concept plan. And the conditions are outlined in the staff report. And they are also briefly summarized here on the slides. General consistency with the MCP is always a big one. You know, a big part of staff's comfort with this project is the way the MCP is laid out. So we do want general consistency with the MCP. The revised schedule of uses is condition two, that removed the single-family, two-family, and multifamily unit types and added the detached villas instead. The revised property development regulations. Condition four requires coordination with community development and Public Works to discuss the roadway and drainage improvements along Big Ben Road. Condition five is where the environmental conditions start. Many of those are carryovers from the 2010 ordinance. Probably not needed, because most of that section is now codified in the city's land development code as being required. Back in 2010, it wasn't. But for the sake of carrying over the consistency, there's some slight changes to a few of those wordings in the condition. But we did want to carry the majority of it over. So the heritage tree survey, the Manti Protection Ordinance, which is run by Lee County, recording the conservation easements, requiring native vegetation planting plans. You know, a lot of that stuff is already required in the code now. But for the sake of making it clear and making sure that it's not overlooked, we went ahead and carried it over. Condition six has to do with the model home standards and the allowable times that the model homes would be allowed to be open and active. Condition seven has to do with the real estate sales office that would be associated with the model home and the times that they are allowed to stay open and active. Oh, sorry. Condition eight has to do with requiring renderings at time of local development order. You saw some conceptual renderings that the applicant proposed of what the structures could look like. We want something a bit more narrowed down and precise, obviously. And we are going to require that they provide us some precise renderings at time of development order process to make sure that it is, in fact, meeting the intent of being designed to look like single-family homes. Let's see. Condition nine is the wildland mitigation plan requirement, that it's tied to deviations three and five. Condition 10 is the right-of-way planting plan, which, again, that's another one that's going to be required once staff and the applicant and the city have the chance to further negotiations for additional drainage improvements. Condition 11 requires compliance with the federal, state, and local flood regulations. Condition's probably not needed, because again, that's just a blanket requirement in our code now. But again, for the sake of putting it in front of you and seeing it in writing, we went ahead and added it. And condition 12 is a big one that says that approval of this zoning action does not guarantee approval of their development order or their building permit. It also doesn't circumvent their requirements to have to go through those processes of obtaining your local development order and your building permit. So by approving the zoning, you are approving the concept. They still have to go through the required processes to actually get their permits to construct. So with that in mind, that is all staff has. If you have questions for us or the applicant, we are here.
One question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
The applicant has agreed either agreed to these conditions or agreed to discuss them with you.
They've agreed to all of them.
They have agreed.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I have a question regarding the conditions. There's quite a few conditions here. What happens if you can't agree on a condition, like the planting plan?
So if we can't, well... Two things. If typically, if there's a condition that staff and the applicant feels is going to be problematic, it's supposed to be called out separately in this meeting and through the council meetings as a condition that needs additional discussion or needs to be worked on additionally. So I think where we're at now is we're okay with the concept of the right-of-way planting plan that they showed. What we're not sold on yet is the specific locations. And those locations are going to be based on whether or not the city is able to obtain an easement for additional drainage infrastructure. And from there, you work on the specific locations that make sense. So we're both in agreeance that an alternate right-of-way planting plan makes sense. So that's the brunt of the condition right there, is there an allowance that deviates from the standard that's acceptable to both parties? And the answer is yes. The specifics of exactly where the plants go, there's a million different ways you can cut that throughout the development order process. And I don't think that condition gives us too much heartburn.
Well, depending on which condition you may not be able to reach an agreement on, what's the process for resolving disagreements?
So there's a few different processes. Depending on the extent of the condition and its effects, it may require a modification to the plan development. Now, that modification might be able to be done administratively. Or if there's a significant impact, or if it's beyond the scope of what staff is allowed to look at administratively, it may necessitate coming back through the hearing process to redo certain conditions. And the applicant is aware of that.
Thank you.
I got a question. For the zoning board members, I'm looking at what's been approved already. It's the last page in our packet that we got. Mike, you've got a slide that looks like that. I think this is what has been approved.
That was part of the 2010 master.
2010.
Yes, sir.
14 years old. And... There you go. Thank you. I assume that had deviations built into it when it was approved? This is approved and ready to go?
It had, I think it had one deviation or two that may have been approved previously. That master concept plan is expired. So essentially, what that means is when you have a master concept plan, it's valid for five years or until a substantial portion of the project is built out. This plan was never effectuated. So the property maintains its zoning. It maintains that this is the master concept plan. It's just not valid right now. So essentially, they could have had more than one option. The request could have been, all we want to do is reestablish the master concept plan that was already approved. That could have been one option for them. Instead, what they chose to do is a less intense project.
So for board members, to me, this new idea is a vast improvement over what was going on 14 years ago. Vast improvement. And I commend the poor property owner that's had to put up with this for this amount of time.
The new property owner, right?
Has the ownership changed? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, that's what they said at the beginning, yeah.
And what is one of these detached villas going to cost? So I can make sure I'm not part of the target market?
That's a little premature to ask that question.
It's hard to tell exactly what the market rate is. It will be $1 million, $2 million market price?
Out of my mark. Too many commas.
A million is a... Any other questions for Mr. Figon?
Just a comment I want to make. You know, I think, and I don't want to be facetious, I'm serious. The hurricanes had a positive side to it. You know, it sure did. All the things that we have learned about flooding, stormwater management. And I have to say, having been involved with that in my own community, a lot of changes for the good have taken place. So that plan in 2010, you know, they had, I see they had a detention point. That's great on paper, but in reality, probably wouldn't have worked anyway. So I commend, you know, the city and the applicant for really responding to what the current needs are of today. And that's quite impressive that we're not doing the same thing over and over again to create more problems in the future.
Anything else for Mr. Figon? We will now hear from the public. Public comments, Mr. Mayor? You've been sworn in, so?
I need to be sworn in.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir. I stand here because we see the city's going to be responsible for some of the drainage improvements on this project. Now, I was elected by the people, and I plan on representing the people and the taxpayers. Without this project coming forward, there would be less expense to the city. So is this, is the builder here going to take some of the cost expenses for any improvements? I understand, the city did do a lot of work on Big Ben Road. I'm not sure it's been very successful. But that's my concern, is how much is it going to cost the city to allow this project to continue? I hope they get it done. There's enough rules and regulations in this world. They keep trying to do it the right way. So good luck to you all, and let me know. Thank you.
What would be the cost, what would the cost to the city be? Go back.
I don't know. I haven't heard a word about it.
But what do you see on the property plan that would make you think the city's got to invest something?
Well, they keep saying that.
They're talking about continuing to make improvements on the road leading up to the property.
And the drainage. They keep talking about the drainage.
You know I'm all about the drainage and stormwater, so...
Yeah, well, that goes on the road right away. I believe the road right away belongs to the city.
So are you thinking this project developer should contribute some to the improvements still needed on the road leading up to him?
You know, I...
Mr. Chairman, would I...
My point is that this is really not within our purview.
Well, let me make a recommendation.
It's the mayor.
The mayor's asked a comment. There's probably some other public. When all the public has made their presentation, then the applicant engineer can come up and explain how the stormwater works and address it.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Good point.
Okay, I'm just concerned. Concerned about what the impact to the public might be.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
We have two speakers who have registered this morning. Wolfgang Oster. I'm sorry. Sorry. Do you want to go forward?
Do I need swearing in?
Sure. You have been already, but...
Okay.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm Catherine McLucas. I live at 27527 Big Ben. I am next to probably the house that's, the house is going in, I think on number seven. And they're trying to say that they want this wall up in 10 feet. Okay, so where's the wall going to sit on the property on the south side? Is it just trees? Is there like a cement wall? Because my yard has flooded so many times, and the water is rising. There's nowhere for this water to go. They've stated the fact that they filled this area in. They have not filled anything in over at this property yet. I've got pictures over the years of everything flooding through there. Down that street, they spent, the city was charged 1.4 million to fix the drainage down through the road. It has made it worse. There is, it's flooding all the time. My, just recently, the hole underneath my house, when they had the high tide and the full moon, I got another four feet in the garage. And that was just a month ago. It has not worked through there. I don't know what to tell them about this flooding that's through there. But walls are not going to evaporate the water that comes through there. I wrote down so much. They're trying to fill in where... I'm not sure if they've asked to fill in more of that canal so that they can get more of their units in there. So yes, there are setbacks that they want from 25 to 10. That's, yeah, that's how they're trying to get all these 10 units in there. And by filling in the dock space so they can get their single-family homes in there and all the dock spaces. I only have riprap through there. I have replaced the pavers at the river three times now, and I've only been there six years. So I can see where they're trying to fill that in, but that's against rules. There's no way a fire truck is going to be able to even turn around through there. I've watched one get stuck. Because the road is so narrow through there as well. I don't see how they would even get a turnaround there. That road is not...
I think the city and the developers have heard your comments. And I'm sure that that's something they're going to take into consideration. And we thank you very much for your comments. It can't be settled now, but I think between discussions, between the city and developers, this issue will be addressed. Stormwater is extremely important and will be addressed. So thank you for your comments, ma'am. And I wish you the best. Please?
My name is Wolfgang Oster.
Sir, ma'am, this microphone. You're coming on up.
Madam?
Anyone who wishes to speak will have to come up to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is...
You have been sworn in.
My name is Dorian Whelan. I live at 27526 Big Ben Road. I want to publicly say I do not oppose the project. But if anything, if we could just take a breath, because the city removed the swales from our street and installed sewerage that goes to nowhere. It just stops. And so now, since the city made these changes, are under the street floods. And I have pictures to prove it. And so you can, they can build this project. They can sell it out. And the new owners will get to my property line at 27526. They'll have to stop their cars, jump in a kayak to get to their property. So the city has refused to address this. We've met with them several times. And when is someone going to correct the mess that they created? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
When you say the city, they, who specifically? You're meeting with the community development side? You've met with the mayor?
We've...
Been before city council? Specifically, who is the city?
Who are the people that we all met with? You guys remember?
Well, it has been staff.
Probably Public Works. It wasn't, no, it wasn't the mayor.
It wasn't the mayor.
No. No, it wasn't.
He wasn't there.
Right, you weren't there.
Okay, well, you don't know. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. Again, this is something that really is not within our purview, but, but we understand your concerns. And I'm sure that the city has now heard your concerns and, and, and again, will, will consider it.
I'm just saying, you need a kayak.
Thank you. One other gentleman was going to make a comment?
My name is Wolfgang Oster and I'm ceding my time.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Speak in the microphone, please.
My name is Wolfgang Oster from Bonita Bay and I'm ceding my time to my lawyer, Douglas Lewis.
Resident of Bonita Bay?
Mr. Lewis reached out to me earlier. He has a, has a brief presentation to present that's longer than the no more time limit. Because this is a plausidigital hearing and I, he represents the author and I believe some others as well. I recommend that the board authorize an additional time. He said he would need no more than.
15, 20 minutes.
15, 20 minutes. That's you. Do you have a PowerPoint presentation or?
No, remarks.
And can I just ask quickly the purpose or opposition?
Yeah, to oppose, correct.
Opposition?
Yes, opposition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gary, you, you have time?
I'm good, yes. Well, good morning, members of the board. Thank you, Tony. Morning. For the record, my name is Douglas Lewis. I'm an attorney with the firm of Thompson Lewis in Naples, 745 12th Avenue South, Suite 105. I represent Mr. Wolfgang Oster. He's, and also SOMAX, which is the entity that owns the property. He's the owner of a single-family home at 27381 Oak Knoll Drive, located on the opposite side of the river. My client is a City of Bonita taxpayer and affected residential property owner, as mentioned by the city attorney, that has legal standing in this matter. My client opposes the proposed amendment to the Riverbend RPUD. By way of overview, we will ask this morning that the application be denied. Number one, on the basis is it's not legally sufficient and number two, that it does not comply with the comprehensive plan and LDC. So, it's an overview of what we're going to present today. Each of you and the applicant have a binder with documents that I will be citing to that will help my presentation as you see, as we walk through the presentation. And I'll refer to that in the presentation. My client will also ask today that deviation requests number one, four, five, and six be denied on the basis, number one, that they're not justified. Number two, they create incompatibilities with surrounding area. Number three, they reduce the LDC's health, safety, and welfare protections by more than doubling the allowable boat traffic and impairing the navigation on the Imperial River. And four, they reduce LDC protections for the onsite and offsite mangrove preserves. As an introductory matter, I'd like to briefly review Section 4-1313 of the LDC. Before you make your recommendation to the city council, there are certain factors that this board is charged with evaluating. The first is whether the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the Bonita Plan, the Land Development Code, and any other applicable codes or regulations. If, in your opinion, after you hear the presentation, there's non-compliance with the code, the Bonita Plan and the Development Code, then you would be obligated to recommend denial. And I would add to that.
Will you cite this section that we're not in compliance with, please?
As I mentioned, by way of introductory matter, it's Section 4-131 Sub 3 of the LDC. And so, your organization, your board is charged with evaluating or confirming compliance with the Bonita Plan and the Land Development Code. And I would add to that, that if you think about the comprehensive plan and the role of the comp plan, it kind of sets the parameters as to where you think as a city growth needs to occur, the density, the uses. It's kind of the backbone in which the city is built. And when you undermine that, you, there are real consequences. So, I think that's a very important factor. The other one is whether you meet or exceed all performance locational standards for the potential uses, whether the request is consistent with the general uses as set forth in the Bonita Plan, whether the request is compatible with existing planned uses in the surrounding area, and whether or not the request will adversely affect environmental critical areas and natural resources.
You know, you still haven't cited where we have not complied with that section.
I'm just, I'll get into that.
You just.
Mr. Chair, if, if Mr. Lewis could go through his presentation, maybe it'll get, go through faster if we can get to the questions at the end.
Well, I mean, I, look, I want, so if you're going to pose this thing, tell me where it doesn't comply.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that.
You know, that's all I need to know.
I'm laying the predicate.
Show me a section and tell me where it doesn't comply.
Will do, will do. For your information, this is a predicate as to, as to the factors that you're going to evaluate as you make your recommendations and I will get into that. In tab two, you'll find a preliminary concept plan for the applicant's proposed single-family home. This was provided to the owners as part of the neighborhood informational meeting. And you'll see a very Key West-style, three-story structure. Looks like a very nice, single-family residence. And I want you to look at that. I want you to ponder the housing product. It's, it's a typical, single-family, Key West-style home. And as you think about the application and the 10 proposed individually-owned, individually-owned, multifamily marina docks. Again, these are multifamily marina docks. These are not single-family dwelling docks. These are, these are multifamily marina docks. I would ask you to think about two things today. First, why isn't the applicant just building this as a standard-platted single-family project? Look at the housing type. This is not anything unique or creative. This is a standard. You can see it down Bonita Beach Road, these Key West-style homes. This is a typical, single-family product. We will demonstrate today that this is not a unique housing type. It's a single-family housing type, very typical, and a way to creatively seek to undermine the LDC protections in the comprehensive plan. Second, when considering the age of the homes in the area, and we look at that area, look at the homes, think about today the precedent that's being set by a multi-slip residential marina. Now, I want you to think about those words because it's in the packet. The applicant acknowledges that this is a multi-slip residential marina and I want you to think about the adverse impacts of having that kind of density on the river. Staff acknowledged the precedent being set with this detached villa concept today in their, in their presentation. And they acknowledged that essentially, this is a concept that can increase single-family density on lots. I think this is perhaps the biggest problem with the application. The applicant seeks, seeks to focus on the single-family housing type, which is fine, but not the multi-slip residential marina component, which is very distinct from a single-family dock in terms of the number, the density, the use on the river. And they also don't really want to acknowledge the undermining of the underpinnings in your comprehensive plan and your land development code as to single-family setbacks and how these single-family communities look. And if you think about it, if you look at the properties nearby, you're going from what you typically see, maybe four to five single-family platted lots to 10 lots in that same area. So, let's start with tab three in the packet that I presented. It's called, tab three, there's, the applicant's staff had did their staff report and they've created this new definition of a, what they're calling a detached villa. It's basically a dwelling unit that's occupied by one family, not connected to a structure, and you can have multiple detached villas on a single parcel, right? So, I want you to think about this. They've acknowledged that they're not going to rent these. They're going to sell these off. And so, you're going to have individual ownership. Well, to do that, you have two options. You can plat it, which would be the normal course. In my view, my review of the code, I think they platted it. You could end up with maybe four, perhaps five, single-family residential lots. But what they're trying to do, instead of plating, because they have to have individual ownership, you can do what's called a land condo, where you basically submit, I've done several of these in town, but you submit land to a condominium form of ownership. And that's essentially what they're doing. So, I want you to think about, why is this, as you think today about the application, why is this necessary? Why do we have to go through these contortions and, and create a villa definition? Because you have a single-family. This is clearly a single-family product. If it walks like a duck, if it talks like a duck, cracks like a duck, it's a duck, right? So, think about that because that's important. Now, the applicant in the neighborhood informational meeting indicated the price point. Now, at the informational meeting, they said between $2 million to $2.5 million. Today, they're saying $1 million to $2 million. Well, I can tell you at this price point, they're selling river access. We all know that. I'm not going to spend $2.5 million on a property or $2 million on a property if I can't get direct access to the river. So, it's, and they've already said it in the neighborhood informational meeting. They said it's in your tab. But they said that there is going to be 10 docks owned by the 10 unit owners. So, you have a unit owner that has a dock. So, they're selling with that ownership, the dock. And that's how they get to the price point. The applicant's not going to be renting homes. They're going to be selling. So, as I mentioned, they're going to have to do a land condo, which is again, creating a lot. Now, if you look at your land development code definition of a lot, and it's, it's in your code, I also have a copy of it under tab nine. There are some tabs that are going to be green in nature. But let me read to you what you, what your code defines a lot to be. It means a parcel of land accommodating a building or buildings of unified design. So, that's what it is, a lot. So, it's a parcel of land accommodating a building or buildings. They've already said they're going to have to sell off 10 units, which means they're going to be subdividing. In your site plan, you see one overall lot. Well, they have to subdivide this to sell it. They can't not subdivide this. And they're going to have to do it, not by plat. They're going to do it by land condo. And they frankly said that on the record. So, the record's clear as to how they're going to do that. That's a lot. So, as we get into later, as we talk about your comp plan provisions, as we talk about your LDC provisions, they're all tied to lots. Now, they'll make the argument that we're talking about a housing type and that the housing type is a single-family. Fine, I don't, it's definitely a single-family. I agree with that. What they don't want you to focus on is that your code looks at housing type and they tie it to lots. They tie it to property types, platted lots. And they set development standards, density requirements, intensity requirements, all tied to the lot concept. And we're going to get into that a little bit more detail. Now, I want to start by observing that the conceptual site plan, and that's in, in your, in your binder. It's in tab number. Tab number four in the binder, tab four, you'll see the conceptual site plan. And you'll see in that site plan, it's one giant platted lot. In fact, they removed the prior dimensional requirements for the lot. It was basically the prior RPD had a single development requirement for a lot. They've removed that. So, there's one lot. There's no lot lines at all shown. And I would say that, that it provides no detail as to how they would, how, how these lots would look or how these lots would comply with the LDC requirements for single-family docks. Now, that's important because again, docks drive the price. This is all about docks, selling water access to get to the price. And what they want you to focus on is the single-family product type. And they have to demonstrate how they're going to comply with the LDC requirements for single-family docks, which they don't. In fact, they can't comply with the single-family dimensional, and I'll get into that, for each platted lot. So, what they end up doing is undermining your code by eliminating the single-family dimensional standard. And you get a greater density and site intensity. It's not consistent with the neighborhood. It's absolutely patently not consistent with the neighborhood and you have in the record. You can see what these lots look like. You can see the width of the lots. Yeah, they're not 100 feet wide lots, but they're certainly not putting 10 units on an acre-half property. And so, it's not consistent with the LDC. And as I stated, as a member of the board said earlier, it's not consistent with the two-unit, single-family limit under the expired RPD. I think that was a very astute observation that you're actually looking at separation, you're looking at intensity on the lot. So, as initial basis for denial, I wanted to say that, I want to talk a little bit about the sufficiency requirement. So, in your code, under Section 24-295, there is a requirement for master plans and it outlines what the master plan needs to have. You have to have these in order to be sufficient, meaning before staff can bring it to you for review, you have to have these things. This is under 6B, where the subject property will be divided into lots or parcels. They've already admitted that. They're going to have to sell these off. You can't sell off property without plating it or putting into a land condo or condo. You've got to sell it off. And we know what a lot means. So, divided into lots or parcels, that's where a building is going to be separately owned by different owners. There's 10 of them at least. There could be more. They could have, in fact, they've already said that they're going to take that water area, the repairing area, and they're going to make that an HOA-owned property. So, that's actually probably an 11th subdivision, which creates another problem for them because it's not tied to a lot. So, we'll get into that later. But you have to, in order to be able to be here in the first place, it has to have the site plan, has to have dimensional standards for the lots or parcels. It doesn't. You don't see anywhere on here where these lines are going to be, how they're going to sell these off. It's not here. And it's required per 4-295A Sub 6, as well as lot coverage and the minimum proposed setbacks for the principal structures. Those are all required. Sub C under 6 also requires that they list the number of habitable stories. That's not listed on the site plan. That's an absolute patent deficiency in their application. The second basis for denial is the application does not comply with the comprehensive plan. And I want you to look at tab nine in your binder. I list in there first the future land use component of your comp plan. And it says that essentially, development orders shall be issued by the city only for developments consistent with the future land use map. So, meaning if this, this multifamily, if you determine that this multifamily residential marina is not a permitted use under your comp plan or the future land use map, you can't, you cannot recommend approval of this project. So, where is that residential multifamily marina use in your comp plan? So, let's flip over. On page three of five, there is, I just want to bring, I'll come back to this, but there's a little policy that staff mentions, the applicant mentions, or policy 1.14. And they're saying, yeah, we acknowledge that this property isn't really a single-family platted lot concept. So, we're going to create this detached villa as a way to kind of obfuscate or get around the code requirements or comp plan requirements to get more docks on the river, to sell these units. And so, the standard is if you're going to have a use that's not specifically permitted in your comp plan, it has to be similar in character, intensity, and impacts. Now, I will tell you that there's, I've looked at the code top to bottom. There's no way you can have a similar intensity, character, and impact when you think about a single-family, a single-family home that has a dock. You can have one dock and two wet slips. That would, you get on that property, maybe four, maybe five tops. You're having, in this case, you're having 10 individually-owned wet slips. That's not permitted in your code. So, that's a complete change in the character of that area. Now, a creative applicant will say, hey, these are, there's a lot of older homes in that community. We're going to go in, buy this stuff up. We've seen the precedent the city council's set. They're willing to undermine their code, throw away their development standards. You're going to see that river packed with density. So, that's what you want. But the comp plan says similar in character, density, impacts. Now, if you look at policy 1.18 under medium-density residential, what, what's permitted? Well, you can have a single-family home. You can have a duplex. You can have a townhouse, group homes, foster care, public schools. You can have public, semi-public recreational facilities. As an alternative to a duplex, you can have one accessory dwelling located on a single lot. Again, that's a thing, a single lot. And they're going back, the comp plan's tying the, the product type to density by occupied by one, single-family structure. There is no mention in your comprehensive plan to a multifamily residential marina, not here. It's not in your comprehensive plan. In fact, the only reference I could find where that's permitted in your comprehensive plan is with respect to a different land use category, which is under policy 1.1, 1.102 Coconut Village, where it does say appropriate uses within the Coconut Village future land use category include marina and marine accessory uses. So, in that area, I would have no issue. But I have a real problem if you think about the purity of the code and why we have comp plans. I mean, if you want to undermine the comp plan, then you approve a multifamily residential marina that's not allowed in your, in your comp plan. The other aspect of this pertains to the, pertains to the, your, your conservation coastal management policies. And I want to briefly talk, talk a little bit about that.
Briefly, please.
They're not constructing 10, single-family accessory boat docks that would be able to do, do that on the LDC consistent with 10 platted, single-family lots. The applicant thinks to get around that standard and even standards under Section 7358 of the LDC by classifying these 10 proposed wet slips as a multi-slip residential marina. If you look at tab 10, page 153, on tab 10 in your binder, I've actually tabbed it for you.[1757.48] you, they're on the record saying that this is not a single-family dock. This is a multi-slip residential marina. And the reason why they're trying to do that is because they are essentially trying to get around the requirement, because they don't have, they're getting too many docks. A single-family dock would not, 10 single-family docks are not permitted on this property. So they're trying to get around that by saying, well, this isn't a single-family dock, this is a multi-slip residential marina. But for purposes of the comp plan, they're saying, well, this is a single-family dwelling unit. You can't have it both ways. So I think that's where the rub is. The policy 1.18 of the future land use map, it's under tab nine, page five of 35, does not allow for a residential marina on the site. And when compared to the lot dimensions and the setbacks of neighboring, single-family platted lots, the site, as I mentioned, could get four, perhaps five, platted lots. They seek to double that number. In the coastal management policy, that's the policy I mentioned, 22.3, if you look there, it says that the cumulative effects of several marinas or boat ramps in a smaller area shall be considered in the review of the proposed project. Meaning, when you look at this, you have to look at the cumulative effect. How does this impact that Imperial River corridor? When we do this, how does it impact? Well, the cumulative effect, you've now set a precedent, and you've essentially doubled the amount of density on the water. That's a policy consideration under policy 22.32. There's also a policy consideration in your future land use map, on your comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, under the conservation coastal management element, under policy 2234, where it says that marinas and ramps have to be consistent with certain things. For example, priority, if you're going to do a marina, do it in an area where you're expanding existing facilities. Don't do it in a brand-new area. That's under A. You want to have marinas in areas that have historically been used for marine-related activities. That's not, this has not been a marina before along this area.
Excuse me, can I just raise a point of order to our attorney? Is there a time limit on this? And if there's not, then fine, but I just want to know...
Timer has been set for 20 minutes. 20 minutes is about to expire now.
I have heard nothing, any specific objection to anything. You're objecting to the, you think there's going to be more boats on the river? How about the Backwater Jack Marina? You oppose that too?
Mr. Chair...
Talk about boats on the river?
I just want to, that's a specific question that should be answered. I just have something, I just want to summarize. With all due respect to you and your applicant, the zoning board listens to the applicant, and then also listens to the staff presentation. Now, when I'm basically hearing, just to sum it all up, everything we hear from Mr. Fegan essentially is being challenged by your applicant or your client. I believe that our job is to listen to all parties relative to this particular project and this application. But I, after hearing, with all due respect, your presentation, I'm not sure exactly what harm is coming to your client. I don't quite get it. And I don't think it's really relative to this particular project and application.
Absolutely.
So I can't support your presentation, because I'm hearing it for the first time. But my obligation as a board member is to listen to the staff, listen to the applicant, have a free and open discussion back and forth, listen to the public, and some of the public points were well taken, and I'm sure that'll be resolved. I know how the city works. And so I just want to say at this point, I have, your presentation, as fine as it was, and eloquent as it was, has no bearing on my decision that I'm going to make in about two minutes. So I just wanted to make that point clear. Essentially, you've torpedoed what the city, community development department has essentially put forth. My mind can't say that your presentation is going to cancel all of what I've heard. So I just want to end with that comment.
Can you put in one sentence what your objection is?
Let me, let me...
One sentence.
Mr. Chair, I've been trying to follow Mr. Lewis's presentation, and maybe it'd be helpful if I laid it out, and he can correct me if I've got it wrong. But my understanding is that he has a two-pronged objection. One is that the application itself is legally insufficient, because many of the requirements of the code require submittal documentation based on lots and setbacks from lots, and these issues were not addressed by form of the land condominium. And then, and that, maybe I'm a little off on that. And then, second, was that there's inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. And where he was, at the end there was, the docking requirements, the multi-slip residential is inconsistent with what is being proposed as a single-family residential project, and that's about what I got out of it.
And it's our decision...
I may speak.
It's our decision to determine whether or not it's consistent or inconsistent.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. And I personally do not find any inconsistencies.
You're one of seven.
I had a question. Has the city been able to review all of the things that have just been presented to us and make a decision as to whether or not they're relevant or not?
It's our decision.
Not yet, no.
Yeah, we're interested to hear...
This is the first time everybody's heard you...
I'd be interested to hear the rebuttal, but the, I would just need for the record, obviously, the point that I'm trying to make is establish the record for my client. He does have, whether you recognize it or not, he has rights. He's a boater, he's a neighbor on the other side of the river. This impairs his repairing rights. This project, as a member of the community, to the extent it is in agree with your comp plan, to the extent it doesn't comply with the sufficiency requirements, he would have standing to challenge that. So the point of the presentation, whether or not, however you recommend, again, this is a recommendation to the city council, I have to present a record. So whether you like it or not, that's my intent. And so I haven't completed my presentation. I have more information that I would like to get in the record. If you're going to deny that, that's your prerogative, but I want to at least object in the record, so I don't waive that. And I would say, in response to your question, it is our conclusion that, number one, that they have not demonstrated compliance with the BNA plan and the city land development code. They don't meet or exceed all the locational standards. This multifamily residential marina is not consistent with the general uses under the comprehensive plan, and the evidence is overwhelming. You have to factually look at the record to be able to make your recommendation. It's not compatible with existing planned uses. You don't see 10 docks in a one-and-a-half-acre parcel anywhere along that area on that zoning. And its request for the reduced setbacks needed to get the 10 units and the 10 multifamily residential marina docks on the site will adversely affect the mangrove preserve in the river. I haven't gotten into that yet, and environmentally critical areas. For these reasons, we would ask for denial, but I have not completed my application. So I will object in the record if that's...
Mr. Rooney, could you give... I just want to know, I just have a basic question. Are we compelled to have to consider this as part of our decision, based upon any ordinance that might exist?
This is one of the criteria, the testimony of the public and any objectors is one of the criteria you're under consideration.
Thank you.
Now, what I would recommend is, if you have felt that you've heard enough of the presentation...
I have.
You don't want to hear any more, you can close it off at this time, or you can grant him additional time. I would ask that you give the applicant at least five minutes of time to rebut on the record as well. And if you have any questions for the objectors, staff, or the applicant afterwards, please go. And there may be other members of the public out there.
Question down here, Mr. Chairman, right here.
Please.
So if I understand this correctly, the original plan that was submitted, because we did have multifamily in the original plan, this document here, were the dock slips appropriate in this? Because they have 10 that were approved in 2010.
So I haven't even gotten to that part in the presentation. I just want to address that. First of all, the current zoning is expired.
Right.
And when this property owner bought the property, they bought it knowing they didn't have zoning or entitlements. They have no entitlements or zoning at this point. Their option would be to amend, which they've done. They could resubmit, rezone it back to its compatible, you know, R2, or they could seek to reinstate the existing master plan. But they have no zoning at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I object to that.
In terms of, in terms of the state plan, the conceptual site plan, it's expired.
All right. I think we've heard.
Does there any other members that have a question for Mr. Lewis? Okay, now...
Thank you very much.
Mr. Galloway has a question.
I appreciate very much your presentation. I thought very factual, very to the point. Thank you.
Okay, now...
We're going to hear from the applicant.
And I believe staff may have input on that last comment.
Please. Try to be a little more specific, a little more on point. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be brief, because we've already put our information into the record. I'll also defer to your city staff.
Who is this?
Oh, again, Noel Davies, the attorney on behalf of the applicant, for the record.
Thank you.
We've provided you with our presentation. I didn't hear, to your point, Mr. Chairman, anything in Mr. Lewis's presentation as to a proper legal basis...
Thank you.
...for why this is not consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of Benita Springs, or with your land development code or other regulations. There was no evidence presented, contrary to Mr. Lewis's comments, for you to consider that this is not anything other than consistent with your comp plan, which you've heard your testimony from your city staff to that effect. We have, you know, Mr. Arnold is here, our professional planner, Mr. Wilson's here, our environmental consultant, who can speak to any questions that you have with respect to the slips. And of course, you heard from Mr. Herrera, if there's any additional questions on stormwater. I'm not going to repeat our prior presentation. I'm going to let our prior presentation stand by itself, and I think the prior presentation does rebut Mr. Lewis's comments.
Thank you.
And I'd ask...
As Mr. Rooney continues to tell us, we are a quasi-judicial, this is a quasi-judicial hearing function. We are the judges, as you were. We have heard from the applicant, we have heard from the city, and it is to us now to make a decision as to whether or not what's been presented is in compliance with the law.
That's correct, sir. And I'd ask that the board defer to its city staff, who is recommending approval and stating that the applications could...
I personally am prepared to entertain a motion.
Wait, is there any...
More public?
Comments?
Okay, yes.
More public comment?
Not seeing that.
Okay.
All right, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the request to amend their residential plan development RPD to develop up to 10 detached villas, boat docks, and other accessory uses, and to add five deviations.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Roll call.
Let's do a roll call.
What's that, roll call?
I'll take the vote by roll call. Board Member Gambrell.
Aye.
Board Member Waterhouse.
Aye.
Board Member Benson.
Aye.
Chairman Rossio.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hirschensohn.
Aye.
Board Member Galloway.
No.
Well, that case, it's tied to one.
By...
The motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone. I will, the meeting is...
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, what, what, oh, wait a minute. Yeah, we always got to do this thing.
Well, I want to, I got something else.
Gary, let's just do the first thing. There's going to be a report on what we agreed on six months ago, or whenever it was. The title waived, the, what was it? What did we agree to six months ago?
To be here today.
Yeah, it was...
What was that?
It was that car wash on the corner of Production Circle in 41.
Right, 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 right.
It was approved.
And you want, what happened?
It was approved by city council, as conditioned by staff and the zoning board.
Okay, okay. All right.
So during this presentation, we learned that a detached villa hasn't been codified by the city yet. And I think it, and the staff said, or I think maybe it might have been before you got here, Derek, that we could start the ball rolling to beef up the definition of a detached villa by codifying it. And I think that's a good idea. And I think that's a good idea for this board to recommend that city council instruct the staff to add this to a type of dwelling that's permitted, define it better, and what we just learned is, it needs to include, talk about boat slips.
Now, I think you've got to go back one step, Gary, and you've got to approve this land condominium. That is what creates this detached villa, and separates it from a single-family home, right? Now, I don't know if that's codified as a land condominium.
That's probably a state.
I have some comments to make about the whole process afterwards, but if, Mr. Gambrell, you still, you still have more comments?
Unless I need to make a motion. I think this board should recommend it be investigated and defined better and codified.
I don't have any objection to that.
Call that a motion, then second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion on the floor in a second. Should I take a roll call vote? Board Member Waterhouse?
Yay.
Board Member Gambrell?
Yes.
Board Member Galloway?
Yes.
Board Member Benson?
Yes.
Chairman Rossio?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hirschensohn?
Yes.
So that's a recommendation to the council.
Fine, yeah, and then let them tell you, I don't know whether it goes to the city, whomever the administrators are.
And then Derek has comments.
Mr. Derek.
So I just want to, and I don't want you to take this the wrong way if I sound like I'm chastising everyone a little bit, but we need to get control of the meetings a little better, and what I, my role when I'm here, as, I am the city attorney, but when applications come forward, we have outside counsel who reviews those applications for the consistency with the application process, consistency with land development codes, and the purpose of that is simple. I can't act as both advisor to the judges and prosecutor for a case. But what I, my role when I am here is to try to make sure that certain procedural processes are followed, that I can answer general questions about legality of the code and comprehensive plan. And one of the very critical issues that we see when, what I've seen for many years representing land development boards, is that we review an application, we will often get neighbors come out, we will get organized objectors, and in those processes, sometimes the issues get heated, people start talking about stuff that has nothing to do with you. Talk about schools and issues that, you know, there's going to be bats. I've heard all, I've heard everything over the years, 15 years of doing this in Southwest Florida. The critical thing to avoid is making decisions or anything else that prejudices one side or the other. And so that can happen by not granting additional time. I think in this time, you gave 20 minutes, you asked for 20 minutes, you gave 20 minutes to give the presentation, but not cutting it off would be helpful as well, and waiting for the back and forth questions to the end, so that we don't end up with issues on an appeal. Now, you guys are the recommending body on this, and I'd be much harsher with the city commission if we were getting into back and forth and no one could follow the train. I don't particularly think that the neighbors' objections were well argued, they weren't well articulate, they didn't have expert testimony to provide, to counter the expert testimony of the applicant or the staff. But, and what I'd like to just remember is that, you know, when these applications come up, if there are objectors, I will try to have that organized in advance, so that you're not getting a dump with a...
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I completely understand, Mr. Rossio, being a former administrative judge, I completely understand it.
Derek, don't do that again. I would not recommend you do that again, because we'd be totally nonplussed and have no idea, and how we're going to respond to all of this thing. Look, if we were a judge and you tried to do that, something like that, the judge would throw it out. You know that.
Exactly. I know that trial by ambush is not something that...
That's awful.
And I think for me, frankly, and my behavior, I can look at it and criticize myself, but frankly, I've been on tons of boards, and everybody in this room probably has. When I get a document like this, I had no idea who was submitting it. Was this simply the applicant giving us more information? Come to find out, after all the other presentations were made, no, it's somebody who's opposing this. And I'm not a lawyer, I've got one on each side of me that gets at this point, which is wonderful. The point is that, yes, we can be criticized after the fact, but I wish the heck, the next time, should this ever happen, even if you just got it at the last minute, we need some direction as to what we should do, and more importantly, what we should not do, because this caught us all by surprise. So I think there was fault all around. Personally, if I were, I don't know, I'm not being an attorney, I would say you're too late. Why not have established certain time zone before a meeting? With public comment, City Council meeting, you got to do it in writing, it has to be done the day before. If you want to make a comment at a Carlos meeting, you have to write it out. So the process can be improved all the way around.
So I was going, what I was going to get to in the end of this is, you, all of you heard at some point that City, City Commission, Council has directed me to work on with staff, coming up with revised board procedures. One of those procedures is revising the application process for objectors. And so one of the, the tenants that I'm working off of is, anyone who asks for additional time beyond the standard public comment.
And that time is two minutes?
It's three minutes, four minutes.
Four minutes a person.
Anyone who would ask for additional time would have, and would have to make that request in advance and be approved at the beginning of the meeting to have that additional time. They would also have to submit any documentation at least as, as early as the staff report comes out so that, so that you guys are getting it all at the same time.
That makes sense.
I wouldn't, I want to be clear, I wouldn't preclude them from showing up and having 10, 15 people, which is what Mr. Lewis called me yesterday to say, I'm going to have a whole bunch of people and they're going to line up and give pieces of it. And so I was, I was amenable to him coming up and saying, let's give one consolidated presentation. Now, whether he actually had 10 or 15 people, I only saw the one gentleman. So I just want to, I want to make that clear that that's, that's what we're going to be trying to bring forward to you guys. I, you know, obviously, today, I don't think worked out ideally, but-
Good experiment.
Yeah. The other, the other part of it that, that I would ask for is, is, it's absolutely proper to, to say, you've had enough time rebuttal, but we need to be more established in the process. Because, for instance, at the end, didn't come out in the meeting and you've already made your recommendation, but Mr. Lewis got on the record and said that the property has no zoning. And you saw Mr. Noel Davies jump up and say objection, and now that was improper, he would have had his opportunity for rebuttal. But we never got to, to address the issue because there's something, the personalities of everyone arguing, even amongst the board, talking over each other.
He's going to have another crack.
Again, you didn't get anywhere. And, and the, the answer is that the zoning isn't placed, the entitlements are in place, the master concept plan has expired, and as staff pointed out, that can be renewed.
He's going to have another crack at the city council anyway.
Well, and, and that's, again, that's-
It's going to cost that guy twice as much.
He'll have his opportunity then, and now, obviously, all the material's been provided to the applicant to rebut.
Did I hear you say you're working on recommendations to improve?
So, so you heard the, the city, city commission indicate that they want to consolidate the number of boards, that they wanted to, you know, look at revising that?
When did I hear that?
Oh, that was a couple of months ago. It was-
I was napping.
The, the, the simple reason that has not come forward is that it's not just the boards, you know, bringing historical preservation or planning and the planning board and the zoning board, making a mega board or doing anything like that. It's not that simple. All the processes that are laid out in the code have specific roles for different boards at different times. And as you've seen, when you look at the criteria that you look at, you have your considerations, there's like 13 of them, and then there's the decision-making standards, and then, oh, if there's a PD, then you've got to go through this whole other code and look at, or try and consolidate that all into one simple and articulable set of standards.
So when this attorney for the public commentator, from, objector, called you yesterday and said, I'm bringing in 20 people and we're going to have all these notebooks and stuff over there.
I didn't know about the notebooks or any material. All I-
You didn't know what its contents were? You didn't, am I correct in hearing that that guy's primary complaint was it's increasing boat traffic?
Yeah. And, and there's a-
Was there something else, Bruce? He was complaining.
Wait, 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 wait across. Before we jump off the, his point, whether or not that's his reasons for, his motives for doing it, if he is accurate that there are comp plan policies implicated and they're not being followed, he will have the ability to challenge-
Yes.
-the city's decision afterwards. And so the, the key to defending that, the city decision, will be whether or not the standards were followed, but also whether or not procedural due process and other considerations were followed during the process. And so he, you know, he may be incorrect in his argument, they, even if he is correct, the judgment of City Council may allow them to, to choose between the two alternatives and interpretations, but that doesn't mean we try to cut them off at the knees during the process because that creates a whole new avenue of appeal. So I just want to lay that all out.
But you're talking about improving the process. I'm wondering about, my thoughts are, you should have reviewed this first or something.
We, no, everyone should have got it in advance, but we, I checked, we don't have any rules in advance of approving objectors under that standard. So the, the reason why I asked you to approve that, to prove him, his standing today, is because the case law in Florida would provide that they should be given additional standing.
Because he's a lawyer?
Not because, because he represents a property owner, he's going to present evidence on the record. Now, I didn't, I also did, I saw argument. I didn't see any evidence, there were no experts. You know, I didn't see that he turned the existing evidence properly, but he also will, he would undoubtedly argue that he didn't have the time.
Well, train, teach us, Derek.
I'm trying.
No, no, seriously. Teach us when we have to defer to these kind of people. Whenever someone comes in, in a professional capacity, representing a landowner or someone with the right to object, we have to defer. That's what you're telling me.
Correct.
Okay, so we understand that, all right? Next time somebody comes in with a, an engineer or a lawyer or a fireman or a doctor, we have to defer and give him additional time. Doesn't have to be 20 minutes, some reasonable time.
That he's requested before, under the new rules, that he has requested beforehand and Derek has approved.
I did not understand that. Now I think we're clear on that.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we're, we're following, we're following enough procedural due process that we don't get hung up on the process instead of the arguments. It's completely possible for someone to show up-
Procedural-
-well-represented with planners and everything that, and do a, and have a horrible argument. And at the end of listening to it, say, well, that was just a big waste of time. That's, that's entirely possible.
But mess with-
But we won't know until it happens.
Okay. But I like to, I like to just kind of put a PS on this thing, that essentially, anybody who gets at that microphone is due, is, you know, subject to, and respect for due process. It's all part of the system. But I think when you get, as I said before, I don't think this will ever happen again, at least not on my part, because common sense now enters into it. The only thing I'm objecting to, this bombardment at the very last minute, and, but believe me, due process, especially in this state, is really tough because the last thing we want to do is shut them off, which then, of course, there's an objection right there. You didn't want to even give me the time to, to speak. I do that every time.